Thank you and good evening. Welcome to the People's House. This is a public hearing conducted, of course, by myself as well as members of the 37th Guam Legislature. I'm Senator Jesse Anderson Luhon, the Vice Chair of the Committee on Maritime Transportation, Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens. I'll be the presiding over the hearing this afternoon as well as sponsor, and I'll read all the co-sponsors of the resolution as well. This public hearing is called to order. It is... today's the 31st, July 31st, 2023, and it is 6:09. That clock is a little fast, maybe a little fast, okay? In compliance with the open government law, notices of this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all media broadcasting outlets, the Guam Legislature's website, and the Guam Public Notices Portal on Monday, January 24th, and again on Friday, July... I'm sorry, July 24th, and again on Friday, July 28th, 2023. The notice was also announced via the Guam Daily Post on the 24th of July and July 29th. The public hearing is broadcast on local television, GTA Channel 21, Doku Channel 112 through 4, and streamed online via the Estatu de Guahan's live feed on YouTube. A recording of the hearing will be available online via the Guam Legislature Media and YouTube after the hearing. This afternoon, my office will be hearing the testimony, of course, on Resolution Number 29-37COR relative to requesting the U.S. Congress to appropriate monies for Guam non-military residents who were exposed to Agent Orange and who are suffering from ailments caused by the exposure of Agent Orange introduced by myself, and I'll read the other co-sponsors. I'd like to also begin by welcoming my colleagues, Speaker Terlahey, to her left, Senator Roy Canata, Senator Duane Sunicolas, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Talatidegui, and Republican Caucus Leader Senator Frank Losch Jr. Good evening, Senators. Thank you for being here as well. The conduct for tonight's testimonies, of course, well, is... I'd like to start by stating the general rules of conduct for this public hearing. Please provide, again, the legislative staff with any documents for photocopying that you want to distribute. Interims are asked to remain in the room for questions or additional testimony, as may be desired by the members of the legislature. Testimony may be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda of the public hearing. Personal inference as to the character or motives of any of the senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violations of the rules, general rules of conduct shall result in removal from the public hearing room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room and for all proceedings. Any individuals who fail to maintain proper form of decorum will be restricted and will be removed from the room. When speaking, please ensure that the microphone is on and that you are speaking clearly into the microphone individuals testifying, so first be recognized by the chair before speaking. And please, again, by stating your name, start by stating your name and the title you have title and for the record. I'd like to acknowledge also and thank my colleagues again for attending this evening's public hearing. And we'll start with... Should I read the resolution? Should I read the resolution? Let me read the resolution. Yeah, I think we already know what the resolution is about. Yeah, we'll summarize it, and I think I did already with that, but the resolution basically is relative to requesting the U.S. Congress to appropriate monies for Guam non-military residents who are exposed to Agent Orange and who are suffering from ailments caused by the exposure to Agent Orange. And we have in the first panel Attorney Michael Berman, Pedro Titanot, Vivian Payne, Francisco Regis, Joseph Sunicolas, W.R. Charlaff, and Antonio Areola. That would be our first panel. So go ahead and start with Attorney Berman. Thank you very much.
Is that better? Okay. Yes, sir? Thank you. Okay, there's a lot of people here to testify, so I'm going to try to be a little bit brief. I just introduced myself. My name is Michael Berman. I've been in Guam since 1990. Before that, I was in Micronesia for 10 years. I built a private practice in Guam. I own a couple other small businesses, collection agency, repossession company, title company, a few other small companies. I do a lot of work for banks, shopping centers, and I do a lot of personal injury law. Having said that, I'd like to mention at the outset that I did grow up in a military family. Both my parents are buried at Earl International Cemetery. My father was an officer in the military and got a lot of medals, so there's nothing about my presentation today... Okay. There's nothing about my presentation today intended to be anti-military on any level. I'm approaching this subject, I think, in a neutral way. The reason I got involved in this whole subject is I noticed that the new PACT Act was adopted August 12 last year, 2022, and I was shocked kind of to see and happy to see that Guam was added to the list for the very first time. Before, veterans had to be in Vietnam, Korea, or Thailand. All of a sudden, Guam's on the list. Well, that's very important because for veterans, there's a presumption of coverage if you're in a covered location and you have one of the ailments and you're in the military. So this automatically opened the door for a lot of people who previously might not have been able to apply for Agent Orange disability. When I read that, I then began advertising for veterans that I would help them in their claims against the VA, and I had some big surprises when I ran the ads. Number one, most of the people that came to see me were already receiving disability, 70, 80, 90%, 100%. I was very happy for them. It wasn't Agent Orange disability, but they had high-ranking disabilities. So that was a surprise, and I'm happy for them because the two Veterans Offices in Guam, I think, are doing a very able job in advocating for veterans. The second big surprise to me was the number of people that came to me who were never in the military at all, and they were exposed to Agent Orange, and they want to know why they have no redress like the veterans do. I'd say at least 25% of the people that came to see me were not in the military at all. I'll give you an example. I had a gentleman from the Port Authority come to see me. For three years in a row, he drove trucks from the port to Anderson Air Force Base delivering bombs. He's a civilian. He takes the bombs to the B-52, the loader puts in the B-52. So the loader's covered, but the man who takes the bombs out there is not covered? How can that be? He's not covered. Next thing, I had a conversation with an individual by the name of Brian Moyer. He's the president of the Agent Orange Survivors of Guam, and he lives in Orlando, Florida, which is close to my hometown. And I spoke to Brian, very polite gentleman. I asked him, "What was your exposure to Agent Orange?" He goes, "Well, I never really lived on Guam." "Really? Where'd you live?" He said, "I lived on a ship. I lived in the Proteus." I said, "Well, what's your exposure to Agent Orange?" He goes, "Well, I went booty stomping on the weekends." Okay, that means a large part of the population of Guam is exposed to Agent Orange, if Brian is. So I think this, I think you're probably all aware that the rate of cancer rates on Guam is significantly higher than the rest of the country, and that may have an impact on all this. So basically, I would submit to all you folks that hundreds of thousands of people went through Anderson Air Force Base as veterans and also as non-veterans, civilians, engineers. This gentleman will be testifying shortly after me, Pedro Titanot. He was in the military, and he was at Anderson in the early 60s. He saw Agent Orange there. So I guess that's all I would say at this point in time. I want other people to have a chance to testify. I think there's a big silent group of people out there. People are writing me from Texas, California, New Jersey. They're finding my name on the internet, although I haven't advertised in those jurisdictions. Children, I've got a guy from Texas. He knows the name of the street he lived on at Anderson, the street name and the house number. Now he's suffering from Agent Orange disease, a related disease. His dad just died. He's saying, "Can you help me? I was just a child. Now I'm suffering." So I fear this is a fairly deep, deep subject, and I'll leave it there for now because there's so many people here that would like to testify. Is that okay, sir? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Mr. Pedro Titanot? Can you turn on this mic? Oh, yeah. Just state your name for the record.
I want to say something about...
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Oh, my name is Pedro Titanot. I'm a retired U.S. Marine Corps. I was stationed in Vietnam, Da Nang, for over two and a half years. Okay, so I work for the weapons, ammunition, and the chemical. So I have a little bit of knowledge of what's going on that everybody talks about the Agent Orange. Now, Agent Orange is nothing more but a herbicide and defoliant, okay? They use more than herbicide in Vietnam. The reason for that is because they use it in different terrain. Now, I want to make it clearly that the Department of Defense really is denying, or however they feel about it, about the Agent Orange is not contaminated in Guam. Now, the reason for that is, from what I know, is that when I was in Da Nang, they changed all the labels, the tactical labels on the 55-gallon drum, which they have about 19 million gallons over there. Now, they have the... the Agent Orange was labeled tactical orange. Now, before they moved these out of Vietnam, they labeled it with a herbicide, and the reason for that is because they don't want nobody to know that it was Agent Orange. So this is what we're getting. That's the reason why that they're denying it because they don't want the VA to pay the veterans. For what I know is that... they probably, the way I know, is that they're trying to work it out with the VA so, you know, eliminate the payment or whatever it is. But the Agent Orange that was in Vietnam, it was more than an Agent Orange. They have about six, six of those agents over there that were used for different terrain. Now, when all this chemical was removed from Vietnam, they labeled it herbicide, and they omit the defoliant. Herbicide is nothing but just like a weed killer, and the defoliant is nothing but to kill the leaf itself. Now, I don't know why the Department of Defense, they want to use Agent Orange in Vietnam, which is not really doing the war any good. It's not, it's not really practical to use during the war because in Vietnam, I know that they're using, they were in a cave and also in a tunnel. So if you use the Agent Orange, all you do is just killing the trees, but there's no effect on the enemy because the enemy is inside the bunker and the tunnel. So what I'm trying to say is that you use the Agent Orange over there, and what about what about our troopers? They go in there, they don't know there's a bunker in there or there's a tunnel in there. So the Agent Orange doesn't really, doesn't really affect what the Agent Orange was supposed to be used in Vietnam. Okay, now, this Agent Orange, I was stationed in Canio, Hawaii. I was sent over here in 1962 for the typhoon. So I was up at Anderson in '62, and I was working out there in Anderson, and we were supposed to dispose a lot of the debris from the typhoon around Anderson. So I have some of my workers with me, and we were trying to dispose some of these debris around the perimeter, but needless to say, we have Air Force people up there that told us that we cannot dispose it on this area here because it's contaminated. I asked them, "What are you talking about contaminated?", and he was saying, "Orange agent." So there it is, you know? And also, there were people that were working here that were contaminated from Naval Station to Anderson via the pipeline. And this is what I'm saying is that the Agent Orange was affected here in Guam, you know? This year, what's happening here in Guam before they ship it to Vietnam? Okay, now, here's another picture here that shows you the Agent Orange and the pink and the purple. They use the pink and the purple aside from the Agent Orange. Now, the color here doesn't signify blue. It looks orange and purple. So why are we trying to deny something that is right here in the picture showing that it was on Guam? Now, before all these chemicals left Vietnam, they stamped it herbicide. So in other words, what they're trying to say is that the VA will say, "Oh, there is no Agent Orange in Guam." The reason for that is because, why? You change the label. You change the label and you put herbicide. Now, we could see it's herbicide. There's no orange agent, but the chemical inside here is the same application as the Agent Orange. You know, also, we have civilians here that were contaminated due to the fact that there were workers from Anderson to, I mean, from the Big Navy to Anderson. And, you know, they're not veteran, but they're civilian workers, but they're also contaminated with this component. The Agent Orange is just a nickname, but it's nothing but a herbicide and a defoliant. Herbicide is to kill the tree, and the pollen is to drop the leaf. That's all it is. It's just a nickname, Agent Orange. I was exposed to this so-called Agent Orange, but thank God, you know, that I am still surviving, and I deal with this chemical while I was stationed in Vietnam.
Is that good? Yeah. So he's 87 years old. He's been in my office several times. He's quite a gentleman. I'd like to make one comment for all the senators. It's a very technical point, but this is a very technical scientific area if you really want to dive deep in it, but one important technical comment I'd like to make is tactical herbicides are war. Commercial herbicides are, let's get the grass down a little bit. So what the government tries to argue is that, well, the Agent Orange in Vietnam was tactical, but yes, we used the herbicides in Guam, but they were commercial grade. They're all watered down. But the truth is, there's veteran opinions now at the VA that even if it's commercial herbicides, people are exposed to it, they are receiving disability now. And that's one of the reasons why Guam was added to the list. This distinction between tactical and commercial is a meaningless distinction. Don't let the government take you down that path. It's not meaningful. I'm sorry. That's all I have.
No, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Likewise, because it's already been acknowledged that the federal government had acknowledged that there was, whether they label it tactical or what is it? What do you say? Commercial, the fact that they had acknowledged the fact that the folks in the military were exposed. And so Mr. Titanot had just said that not only up in Anderson, but along the pipeline. That pipeline goes from north to south and points in between. Yeah, okay. Okay.
Good evening, Senator. Speaker, everybody. Good evening. I'm Bill Payne. I retired from SRF Guam as a GM14, the highest-ranking civilian that they ever had, local. I did my entire apprenticeship program at Ship Repair Facility. I started in 1964, and the peak years that we're talking about here for Agent Orange was during the prime time of the Vietnam War. At that point in time, there were three cargo ships on the Simpact fleet that were homeported in Guam, the Niagara Falls, the White Plains, and the San Jose. And later on, about four years later, in 1968, '70, they homeported 405 patrol gunboats. They called them PGs. They were the new fantastic aluminum-hulled speedboats that run up and down the Mekong Delta in Vietnam during the Vietnam War. We maintained overhaul them and modernized them because they were homeported in Guam. SRF at that time had a working crew of 500 to 650 people. At the peak of the Vietnam War, we ramped up to more than 1,200. And if we could not get the workforce from outside to supplement our workforce, we went to Subic Bay and borrowed their personnel to support our production shops and the operations at SRF. When they ship, the AFAS-class ship is the resupply ship for the Navy ships operating in the Pacific Ocean, especially during that time, the Vietnam era. There's other ships that pass through here that go to Vietnam, the minesweepers that sweep the ocean in Vietnam for mines so that it will allow the supply ships to enter port and overload their cargo. At SRF Guam, we have certain piers designated for the ship's overhaul and also the dry dock when we're going to dock them and overhaul them. Alongside SRF, across SRF, they call Romu Pier. They have a humongous warehouse that is controlled by Naval Supply Depot. When the supply arrives in Guam from other ships, mainly MSTAs, the maritime transport at that time, they will bring the supply, offload the cargo at NSD, and store it in the warehouse over at Romu Pier. When we're done overhauling the AFAS ships or the ships that's in overhaul and we're ready to send them out to sea, they are sent over to Romu Pier where they load up their cargo. And those drums that Mr. Titanot described is part of that cargo that they take to Vietnam. The AFAS-class ship is equipped with un-rep equipment that can transport those drums from ship to ship, also overload them into barges and take them in to the channel and distribute them to the Army people who in then, transport them to the airfield for the helicopters and their planes to spray the jungles of Vietnam. That's what they call foillets, like Mr. Titanot said. And it's true. The PG-class ships, when they come back to Guam, they deploy for 60 to 75 days, and they rotate. When they come back to Guam, they come back with a haze on part of the aluminum-hulled ship that's kind of sticky, and we ask them, "What did you run into?" He said, "You know, Mr. Payne, when we're patrolling the Mekong Delta, we don't know what's coming down from the sky, but when it's full rainy season there, everything that we run into, the big trees and the leaves, it goes up on the ship, on the boat, call it a boat. How do you clean it? We have to stay inside the boat to protect ourselves from the Viet Congs that are going to shoot at us. So when we get back down to Da Nang, that's when we have the Vietnamese people wipe down the ship. These ships are coming back to Guam to be repaired, including the AFAS-class ships, and overhaul. Our workers, we have four different production shops. They're humongous. People go in and out, clean the tanks, clean the decks, then we dock them, build up the dock, sandblasts, paint them. The entire workforce of 600 people is involved in the work that's being done. I'm not saying that there's outright contamination or what, but at that point in time, there was no warning whatsoever of the dangers of Agent Orange. The only danger that we have ever been warned during that time was the nuclear submarines that were in town, and we docked them too. We normally just provide support services for the nukes, for the submarines, but when it comes time to working on the ship, on the submarines, the people from Pearl Harbor are normally brought in to handle their reactors. We normally dry dock them and give the entire submarine a new coating of paint. On one instance, they came out with a wonder paint for the sonar dome for the submarine. The sonar dome is the most important equipment on a submarine. That's how they guide themselves to the ocean. That's how they detect the other submarines in the ocean. They wanted us to try the new paint system that was developed in the East Coast in Norfolk. So they brought out a couple of people and the material and instructed our painters... So they brought out a couple of people and the material and instructed our painters specifically on how to apply the coating system. They were all dressed down with all kinds of suit, it's like a spaceman suit. They did apply the paint to the sonar dome. It's supposed to kill the barnacles and prevent any sea life from attaching to the sonar dome, that's the most important equipment that they had. Lo and behold, within a couple of months, we got word from SRF that three or four of the painters in Norfolk Naval Shipyard were admitted to the hospital because they had nothing but skin burns all over them. The Navy Naval Sea Systems Command immediately stopped the application of such paint. And that's even more dangerous than the Agent Orange. But just to let everybody know, when we get a ship in SRF for overhaul, everybody goes to the ship. I manage the planning and the engineering division. We have to go survey the ship and check what needs to be done, write down the work scope, and then we negotiate with the command, with the ship's crew and the captain. I manage over two hundred and twenty to two hundred and forty million dollars a year to repair those ships. The only thing is, the people in the yard, and I'm here for them, we were never told of the dangers of Agent Orange, never, never. What happens when they leave the yard? They go home to your families, we don't know what they bring home. Senator Brown, your dad was down there too. He retired as a rigor down there, he was a great man. And those were the people in our dad's production group, were the services group, they were constantly servicing the AFS supply ships. They were the ones that's moving the cargo on and off the ship, stocking up. Your people were the tank cleaners, they'll be cleaning out the tanks, you don't know what the washdown on the ship is, whether they spill a drum or not and they wash it and it goes into the slots. And the tank cleaners are down there. They get contaminated, they don't know it. A lot of my friends in the past two, three years have died of diabetes, healthy people. I myself, I've been a healthy person all my life, but I also have diabetes, none of my family members has it. But I'm not blaming anybody for being sick, it is what it is. But lo and behold, a lot of our civilian people, and we have no recourse, no place to go to, to file our claims. I'm glad that Mr. Berman is a legal advocate and he's going to push this further, I know that, but I'm just saying, please consider those people that work at that yard. Mayor McDonnell is a good example, he was a painter, a sandblaster, he worked for me about fifteen years as a planning estimator, good man, good worker. But every time I see him, I feel for him. All the illnesses that Paul has, I can feel for them, from what they have encountered in the yard that we were never told by our military counterparts, because they themselves didn't know. Okay? They didn't know the magnitude of the damage Agent Orange can do. So that's why I'm here, to let everybody know that we were not sitting down on our butts and getting this disease, we're out producing work, earning our money and pay to support our families and our lives. So I hope that something positive will come out of this for the civilian workforce, and it includes also the Naval Supply Depot people, the Anderson people, they were on the supply line. Whatever doesn't get shipped out of here on the AFS-class ships, it gets transported up at Anderson on the C-5 and transferred to Tonsanu Air Base in Thailand. So don't be misled that it just stays here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Mr. Francisco Reyes? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Francisco Reyes. I'm retired up in Anderson Air Base. I started working up in Anderson in nineteen seventy, under the Civil Engineering Squadron, which handles herbicide. So, I'm just here just to say something about it. I deal with it in a sense because when the entomology people wanted to, was going to spray the pipeline or the flatline areas with the herbicide, I didn't know at that time that it was so-called Agent Orange, because it was like Mr. Titan was saying, it was labeled as a herbicide. So, I worked with payment and groundsman in the beginning, and when the entomology people needed a tractor to pull their herbicide containers through the pipeline, which is rough terrain, they asked me whether I could provide them with a tractor, with a panel to pull that trailer. So, like I said, I'm here just to make sure that us non-military people are being probably recognized to any kind of compensation or whatever. Because it is, we did whisper, I was driving a tractor at that time, they sprayed the herbicide around from Anderson to Pass Junction, if you know where it's at, or by Brow Tree. And, yes, I'm here. My wife, my wife died of cancer, she was diagnosed in nineteen eighty-four, and she died twenty-two years now. Okay? I'm diabetic myself, had cancer. Thank God that I'm doing better, but my daughter's got cancer, so I think it's, one of the things that causes that to my family is the herbicide, they call herbicide. Okay? That's all, that's why I'm just here to let people know too that I'm with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and I do know your wife, I did work with your wife years back, and yeah, actually, she was, yeah, she was one of good friends that I lost, of course, when I first came back to Guam, but thank you, Mr. Reyes. Thank you. Mr. San Nicholas?
Yes, my name is Joseph San Nicholas, retired with the Warm Fire Department in nineteen ninety-five. I am a Vietnam vet, and I served in Vietnam in nineteen sixty-nine, seventy. I am right now a hundred percent disabled, and I do have Agent Orange exposure. I've had it for several years ago. First of all, before I even went in the service, you know, experience-wise, I was watching the Navy people spraying along the pipeline, and I believe a lot of these people just mentioned that, you know, as soon as they spray those things, the forest just dies out, and it takes a couple of months and even years for it to go back on. And I've seen this also in Vietnam as an experience when I was out in the jungle. And, you know, I am even right now thinking about, why did my son die for cancer? Took him into the hospital, January third, passed away January twenty-third, and when I got there, the doctors told me, they said, he had a severe cancer. So I said, why are we all dying from cancer? I've got cancer myself, I got severe diabetes, but I'm very lucky right now that I'm still moving along. I got PTSD, I mean, you know, it's really bad, but I've been trying to control everywhere I go, I try to keep calm, but I do support the resolution, and I think it's about high time that they consider giving Guam the full pension that should be given. The whole area here in the island that is exposed close to the military installations, and I have here a copy of a military guy that was in Anderson that received a compensation for Agent Orange, and it identified the sites where he was at, where he worked at, and his brother used to work at Nikthams and also at Anderson. And just my experience when I was very young, I was with my dad, and we used to go around to the military, pick up junk, you know, back then, we don't know what the hell was over there in the dump, and a lot of people were doing that years ago. And I don't know about whether the military basically picked up every part of those chemicals that are dumped, like what they said, and when I was reviewing some of it in the newspaper, they only identified Maribou and over at Nikthams, Pass Junction area and all that. And I experienced these places, you know, I know for a fact that where their exact locations are, but they never came back to us, you know, to find out, hey, do you know these places? They just did it on their own. So, I really don't trust the military, I've been in the military, but I don't trust their findings. The dump at Mid-Ancien until now is being continued to use as a dump. The whole island is contaminated with all the drinking water that we have, that's the northern lanes. So regardless whether we're military or civilian, there's exposure in the island. And I feel that you guys should pursue this resolution and ask for compensation. A lot of these people that maybe should be compensated are the people that are right close up to the pipelines, living right along the pipelines, and the military installations, naval station, like Mr. Payne here was saying, every one of those guys that were working in the military installation should be compensated, and that's all I say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. San Nicholas. I want to acknowledge also that we have the presence of delegate or Congressman Moylan's staff that is here as well taking notes, because this resolution will be forwarded to him as well, and all the members there as well, but thank you, Mr. San Nicholas. Mr. Charagelov? Charagelov, right? Ariola? Okay, is Mr. Charagelov here? Yeah, are you going to testify? Okay, 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 got it, okay, got it. Okay, okay, Mr. Ariola, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Speaker Tulai and all the senators.
Go ahead, identify yourself.
My name is Antonio A. Ariola. I worked for civil service for thirty years for Anderson. I worked for the supply squadron, and the fence behind supply, once a month or twice a month, they spray it with the herbicide known as Agent Orange, whatever, and you can smell it when they first apply it. I just want to bring up something like, back in two thousand seven, this resolution that was introduced by the legislature, Resolution Number Ninety-five slash EC, after sixteen years, you know, I mean, I really appreciate you, Senator, for bringing this into life because I even went to, in two thousand twenty-one, I went to the Congressman Mike Cruz, I mean, San Nicholas, to present my, you know, if they can bring up about Agent Orange here in Guam for the civilian, but nothing was done, so in my folder here, I got a lot of articles that I saved since two thousand seven all the way up to two thousand ten. I don't know, I just keep following it every year. So, that's all I have. I thank you and Attorney Berman for working on this. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Ariola. I ask also if you have any written testimony that, please submit it to our staff here, and they'll make copies, and we'll include that again in our jackets here, okay? Could we, and also, we'll be asking questions, so we're asking not to leave, but we're going to call the next panel up here, okay? Yes, yeah, yeah, we're going to call the next panel. Mr.? Yes, just give it to the staff and they'll make copies, yeah. If you're going to testify, Mr. Ed Rodriguez? You going to testify? Okay. Mr. Joseph Cruz, Mr. Jose San Augustine, Lucia Perez, Lorraine Okada? I think we have seven. Jerome Okada and Mayor McDonnell. Yeah, okay. Actually, Dr. Akamoto, you can join us as well, yeah, 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 yeah. And maybe at this point, because I know that, oh, you're all right? You're all right? Okay, okay. Mayor McDonnell? Mayor? If you don't mind, we yield to the mayor, okay, to start off, okay? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, there we go. Okay, good afternoon, Mayor, I mean, senators and everybody.
Just go ahead and state your name again for the record, so.
Yes, I'm Mayor McDonnell, I'm from McGany Heights, and I'm here to testify. You know, I have been with civil service for sixteen years, and I've worked with Bill Payne and everybody that I cannot remember. I am also the president of AFGE, and I've known your mom a long time. I, as a matter of fact, in nineteen eighty-five, when I was president, I actually brought in the asbestos people from the, from, you know, excuse me, but I have to think a little bit because I had just a stroke, and I'm just thinking a little bit, and... Yeah, I brought them in from the mainland, and we had a lot of people that had been compensated from that time. When I was working down at the shipyard, I was an apprentice. When I was working down at the shipyard, I was an apprentice. I worked myself all the way up to where Bill Payne was working. And from the time I've been working for the shipyard, I've actually testified that there was a lot of, who? Chemicals, yeah. But anyways, the chemicals that were, the time I had ordered the chemicals, I did not, what do you call it?
Realized, you know?
Yes, I did not realize that the chemicals that I brought in to order for the whole entire service department is what we call it. We actually brought in a lot of chemicals that are not to be what it is. Unsafe and deadly. And we were actually ordering from the paint department, the service department, from all over, the chemicals that I've ordered. We had, we called it a 1020 that we ordered for the submarine. We ordered not just for the chemicals that require to paint, to paint the outside of the submarine. We've ordered the seal that we paint around the submarine, which is anti-falling, anti- chemicals that not only requires that the submarine underneath, it's very, very hazardous. And it's not only that section, I mean, Agent Orange is the only, what do you call it? Things that we put around, around the, around the, the bad portion of the chemicals. You know, we've had maybe four or five different chemicals that we put on the submarine, and it's not only one submarine. We had many submarines that we had to overhaul and do what we have to do to protect these. We also go into the bilge pump and everywhere, everywhere in the submarine. So when we go off island, especially to Subic or even to, to off island like, to go off island into Okinawa, Japan, wherever we were stationed to go, we have to go and work with that. But anyways, going back to the other, what do you call it, other areas in other, other ships, like the other foreign ships, we don't only work with US ships, but to other foreign ships that come in, we also work with them. And we don't even know what is in that. Yes. But I'm here to testify, to say that whatever you guys are doing is what is supposed to be right. You know, when we were in, we were in the civil service, we were told not to go in to sign up for volunteers because we were asked to stay in the shipyard. I am not a veteran, but I am there to serve for the shipyard. And I know that a lot of our, not service related, but we were there to serve with the shipyard. And that is why I'm here today. Look at me, I am sick. And, you know, I don't, I believe my mother is going to be 97. And, you know, I say, I may be to follow my mom if I wasn't working for that shipyard. But again, thank you very much. And people, I hope that you guys can continue to provide us with any help, no?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, sir. My name is Edward. You got to excuse me because I'm just recovering from a stroke. I had three heart attacks, one open heart, and five strokes. So please sit through. My name is Edward David Rodriguez. I'm here to testify that I retired from the government, but I also worked with HOF. I was under Mr. Baum at that time, working with the white paints and the sanitary. But I just want to, I'm a Vietnam veteran, and I would just want to remind everybody when I say this, back in the 60s, when we were still kids, the military came around, every visits, especially in Senahania, right next to where used to be Chengdu, now Bishop Banguna. And they were spraying out chemicals, but they looked like mist. So we go running up to the truck and enjoying the mist, you know, on what the military was spraying out. I don't know if that was Agent Orange or what kind of chemical. But even at the ranch up in Iskumbu, when the pain passed, I rode low and started gossling out a lot of chemicals. And I asked my father, I said, "Pap, why is there, I'm a baby girl, it doesn't share any forest?" And they said, "Don't worry about it, Chant, of course, that's none of our business." But you see, everybody here are getting sick. And I hope you guys make this resolution pass because I don't know if I'm going to last that long. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Joseph Cruz?
Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Including the audience. My name is Joseph Cruz. I'm a Vietnam era veteran. I was in the Air Force. I was stationed in Guam the year 70 to 72. And I want to share my long story, make it short. When I was in the mainland, I always volunteered to go to Vietnam. My dream sheet was to go to Vietnam overseas. I got tired of the cornice, you know, how would I say, micromanagement? Oh, guess where they sent me? Puerto Rico. I loved it there anyways. But I was stationed in Anderson and I, like Bill Payne was saying, I had no clue, we were exposed to that. And I always sensed something was wrong because the smell. I always noticed because I worked, what I did was I worked as a water treatment operator and I saw, I went to all the different pump stations and we serviced those things. And so this always, I noticed that, that it was always, I never see anybody bush cutting, I never see anybody cutting with a lawnmower, and it's always clean, the grass around the foliage, it's always, you know, nice and trim. I would go down to the pump stations where they had emergency pumps for, just in case we need water at Anderson. And so I noticed that was also always clean. So I was exposed to a lot of pipelines, put it that way. But I did not know that was going on, the Agent Orange. So when this all came about, and I'm glad I came here, because literally I know that a lot of people didn't know about it. So I don't feel bad now. I feel, wow, I'm really, really, I've gained something by coming in this evening. So that's my story. That's what I want to share, okay?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cruz. Jose San Augustine?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jose San Augustine, the Director for the Guam Veterans Affairs Office. This is a testimony in support of Resolution 2937 relative to requesting the US Congress to appropriate monies for Guam non-military residents who were exposed to Agent Orange and who are suffering from ailments caused by exposure to Agent Orange. Honorable Speaker, Mr. Chair, and members of the 37 Guam Legislature, I humbly appear before you today to request your assistance in a matter of great urgency and importance to non-military residents of Guam, many of whom are silently suffering as victims of an unseen war. Our mission at the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs, in line with the Department of Veterans Affairs, is to care for those who shall have borne the battle and for their families, caregivers, and survivors. It is well-known fact that during the Vietnam War era, Guam served as a key staging point for many US military operations. During this period, a powerful and deadly herbicide known as Agent Orange was used extensively in Vietnam. There are now numerous well-known documented cases of military personnel who were exposed to this chemical, suffering from severe health conditions, including various types of cancer, heart disease, Parkinson's disease, and debilitating conditions. What is last widely acknowledged, however, is the devastating impact that this same chemical has had on non-military residents of Guam. Many credible reports and testimonies suggested, suggest that Agent Orange was not only present on our island, but also used here. As a result, numerous innocent civilians who were never officially part of any military operation have suffered and continue to suffer the adverse health effects of the exposure of the toxic chemical. Currently, the Department of Veterans Affairs provides compensation and healthcare to US military veterans exposed to Agent Orange. Yet, our non-military citizens, who were likewise victims of the chemical warfare, do not receive equivalent attention or aid. This is a grave injustice that we must correct. We are therefore requesting that the Guam Legislature adopts a resolution urging US Congress to acknowledge and take responsibility for this oversight. We ask for your help in advocating for the US Congress to appropriate monies for medical assistance, support, and compensation to our fellow Guamanians who are suffering from ailments caused by exposure of Agent Orange. In particular, we request that these funds be utilized to provide comprehensive healthcare and medical treatment for those suffering from Agent Orange-related ailments. Fund scientific research to understand the full extent of Agent Orange contamination on Guam and its health impact to our citizens. Develop community education programs to raise awareness that the risks and science of Agent Orange relates disease, related disease. Establish a fund to compensate individuals and families who have been adversely affected by exposure of this toxic chemical. Timing is opportune, since there is more support in Congress for compensating Guam residents for adverse impacts caused by past military practices. Most notably, in the press release dated July 28, 2023, the US Senate passed an amendment to the NDAA just today to expand and extend radiation exposure compensation, RICA, coverage for Guam downwinders. I would like to personally thank Mr. Robert Celestial, who has been working tirelessly to expand medical care to those on Guam who suffer from cancer and heart disease caused by radiation, when Guam was exposed from 1946 to 1962. Mr. Celestial, your voice throughout the years has been steady and conviction and the guiding light for our people. Sisus maasi para todos, ibidamu para hami todos. Honorable Speaker and members of the Guam Legislature, I strongly urge you stand in solidarity with non-military residents of our beautiful island who victims of this tragic situation. By passing this resolution, we can collectively express our will to the US Congress that they must take action to rectify this longstanding injustice. Thank you for your attention and your empathy for the victims of this devastating health crisis. We believe that with your support, we can bring about the change needed to address the significant health issue impacting our fellow Guamanians. Donkuluna sisus maasi.
Thank you, Mr. San Augustine. Mr. San Augustine, can you provide your written testimony as well?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Lucia Perez?
Good evening. My name is Lucia Regis Perez. Hafiday Honorable Speaker, Mr. Chair, and esteemed members of the Guam Legislature. I sit before you today as an advocate of our veterans, service members, and retirees' families, and as a concerned citizen of our great territory, seeking your support in raising a vital issue to the United States Congress that profoundly affects the lives and well-being of our fellow Guamanians. Guam has a rich history of standing shoulder- Guam has a rich history of standing shoulder to shoulder with the United States, our troops, and our allies. This steadfast dedication has not come without its price. In the midst of our dedication, a significant portion of our non-military community, who has helped build the infrastructure on this island, has been inadvertently exposed to Agent Orange and need medical assistance and support. An article in the Guam Daily Post in July seventh of twenty-twenty titled "Report Recommends Further Probe Into Agent Orange Use in Guam" cites a Government Accountability Office report that states that draft environmental assessments were written in nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand nine and indicated herbicides two, four D, and two, four, five T were used for weed control on Guam through nineteen eighty. These herbicides were components of Agent Orange. The report, however, did not find definitive evidence that Agent Orange was offloaded on Guam. It is probable that TCDD, which is a dioxin congenere concentration that is detected in soils, are associated with chlorinated herbicides. Records of these chlorinated herbicides were used by the military in Guam via Navy Circular nineteen fifty-eight. And veteran affidavits documenting the use of two, four, five T and two, four, five TP, along with the data collected from previous soil sampling events, suggests that the presence and use of chlorinated herbicides was likely. A follow-up article titled "New Law Recognizes Agent Orange Exposure in Guam" on August twelve, twenty-twenty-two states that the federal government, and I quote, "The federal government for years denied Agent Orange use on Guam." Attorney John Wells, who is a retired U.S. Navy commander and chairman of Military Veterans Advocacy, Inc., says, quote, "I think you have to see it as an admission that Agent Orange, or at least some sort of the herbicide, was used on Guam." What is certain is that the components of Agent Orange were used in Guam. Although one ship carrying Agent Orange stopped at Upper Harbor en route to Vietnam more than fifty years ago, had no evidence that the cargo was offloaded on the island. However, there was a report that did acknowledge, through various military records, that the components were used in, on Guam in commercial herbicides. It is not the tactical use or commercial use of the herbicides that matters. What is critical is the chemical composition and its potential health impacts on our people. The exposure to Agent Orange, which has the most potent compound, TCDD dioxin congenere concentrations, has led to several health conditions, including type-two diabetes, respiratory cancers, prostate cancer, peripheral neuropathy, which means numbness, tingling, motor weakness, bladder cancer, Parkinson's disease, hypertension, and chloroacne. This is a skin condition that looks like common acne. And the reason why I cited just a few of these are these are some of the diseases that you see in every family. And when our families go to the doctor, especially with the chloroacne, it looks like simple acne. If we weren't aware that Agent Orange was on island, you would look like a teenager who is in puberty. When in fact, it may have been his parent was in the military and was stationed in a location that had Agent Orange. How does that go down to your children? Simple process of reproductive, reproduction. It's amazing what cells carry and go into our children's bodies. So it's not just the previous generation, our elders, my grandfather, my boss, who are veterans, but it's also their children, their grandchildren, and their great-grandchildren that we have to think about. How the chemical was spread, and that is why in the Director's testimony, when he mentioned funding scientific research to understand the full extent of Agent Orange contamination in Guam and its health impact on our citizens, is we need to take a look and understand soil contamination. We may think it went away, we may think it blew away, we may think we bulldozed it away, but did it really? Then, Anderson Air Force Base up north, a stumble, where are your waterlands? How far does that go into? We're drinking the water, we're having our children drink that water. Then it goes into the sea. Our fish live in the sea. What is one of the ways that our families has taught us to feed our families? Through fishing, through farming. Through Resolution Number twenty-nine dash thirty-seven, we can ensure that our fellow Guamanians receive the medical support they need to combat the illnesses caused by Agent Orange exposure. This would not only offer much-needed relief to these individuals, but would also mark a step forward in rectifying a longstanding oversight on our island. Guam needs to be included on all aspects, military and medically related. It cannot continue to just be conus. It cannot be, oops, I'm sorry, we passed the bill, we passed the law, but we have to go before Congress again to include Guam, to literally state Guam. This should be, one for all should be good for all. We should not be segregated because of distance. We should not be forgotten because we're all out here in the Pacific. So let us use this time where Guam is being looked at and where individuals, where the military is putting up systems to defend our island. Let us use this time to make our voices heard, that we need to take care of our families also. I thank you for your dedication to this cause and deeply appreciate your efforts in ensuring this plea is heard and acted upon by U.S. Congress. Thank you for your time and consideration of this pressing issue.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. And could you also provide your testimony as well? Thank you very much. Lorraine Okada?
Mr. Chairman and members of this fine body, my name is Lorraine Okada. I reside in Bergada. And I'm one of those innocent, non-military civilian who is a victim of Agent Orange. I never served in Vietnam and I was never in the Air Force, nor did I work at the Chirripire, and nor do I live near the pipeline. But at a young age, at a young age, I worked at Anderson Air Force Base from nineteen seventy-three to nineteen seventy-nine. That was the prime year of my life, the prime year of making a family, and the prime year of making babies. I was pregnant while I was at Anderson Air Force Base and, and a healthy, young chamburita girl. But lo and behold, I gave birth to a fine, healthy, young boy, whom I thought was healthy, only to find out that my baby was diagnosed with cancer. At that time, just to hear the word cancer is very traumatizing, especially when you know that the only means of help is to fly off island. And when you know that you're just starting a job, starting a family, having the means to go off island without any kind of help, without any kind of support, whether it's financial, mental, or my well-being, there was none. I was fortunate enough, through family's support, to make it to San Francisco so my son can get the healthcare that he needed. I'm also fortunate to know that my son is now over forty-two years old and is alive. But I also know that he also continues to have illnesses and is facing the challenge, the same challenge I went through, facing challenges of starting a family in the health condition that he is in. At the time, the first thing the doctor said to me was, were you ever, did you ever serve in Vietnam? I was surprised at that question because I was a skinny old chamburita girl who can't even fight or win a war. And I was puzzled by that question. And I asked if, did that have anything to do, because at the time, my husband, my late husband, served in Vietnam. Well, we find out years later that my late husband was exposed to Agent Orange and it was service-related due to his time in Vietnam. I thought it was an avenue for me to seek help from the Veterans Administration for my son. Since my late husband passed away, I had no other means of help or support. I went through the VA, only to be declined because the military and the Veterans Administration claim they have no responsibility over me and my son because we are civilians. I have tried many avenues to see if there was a way that we can get together or find me a way to find the path to get the same kind of support that veterans get. A party of mine served at Anderson Air Force Base as an Air Force firefighter, never served in Vietnam, was diagnosed with cancer very recently. He made a claim based on his tour at Anderson Air Force Base, and he's got a hundred percent service-connected disability. I served in Anderson Air Force Base, but I didn't serve the U.S. military, but I serviced all the military personnel that lived at Anderson. But I have no help, had no help from anyone. When I saw this announcement in the newspaper, it kind of like seemed to be the prayer or answer to the prayers that I always had, because I know there are many other civilians who have suffered the same way I did, have suffered the same way my son did, but they are non-military and no one seems to, they have, they seem to have nowhere to go. So Senator Luhan, I really got to hand it to you to give us this time to hear the testimonies from the individuals who have witnessed the existence of Agent Orange on our island and those who have testimonials about their, the suffering that they have gone through because of the devastation that this particular Agent Orange has done to our people and our island. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Okada, much. Dr. Akimono, do you mind if I go to Mr. Celestial first? Mr. Celestial, go ahead. Thank you.
I wanted a beauty before age. Hafedé Buenos, Senator Luhan, Speaker Terahy, and the rest of the honorable senators. My name is Robert Namelix Celestial. I'm retired from the U.S. Army. I was stationed in Iwetakatol, but today I'd like to, I am in favor of this resolution. It's an important resolution and all the testimonies today is very touching and, and it really needs to be resolved in Congress. I came here to testify because I like to tell a story, if it's okay. When the late Senator Angel Santos and I, many years ago, sat down and ate lunch one day, and I just got to know him, we were eating lunch at his office and he shared his story about his daughter who had leukemia, and they were stationed in Anderson Air Force Base, and how she passed away from leukemia, and he blamed the contaminated water in Anderson Air Force Base. So at that time, we were working on the radiation fallout Guam. So what I did was, I did research and I found all the documents pertaining to the contamination and TCDD and Agent Orange. And the late Senator Santos passed away, so I didn't know what to do with the research. So I gave it to a Dr. Louis Seifres from the University of Guam, who was the Cancer Director. And he wrote, he took my documents and he wrote Land of the Rosaries. You could go on Google and download the document. It's called Land of the Rosary, has all the information, the maps, and where all the contaminated sites were. And that map, when you see it, was given to me at a presentation in Agania Heights Mayor's Office, Mayor McDonnell. After the presentation, a gentleman came up to me and just slid it in my hand, and I didn't know what it was. But that map showed every site. And in his report, he talked about all the contaminated areas here on Guam. And so what happened is that Speaker Forbes, at that time, if you recall, formed the Right to Know Commission in two thousand and seven. The Right to Know Commission was to investigate the Agent Orange on Guam with Dr. Louis Seifres, myself and the commission. But that commission died out. And after it died out, for many, many years, the MVA, the Military Veterans Affairs came over, I believe Mr. Moyer, and their attorney came to Guam and asked me for information about Agent Orange in Guam. So that's when Speaker Terahy came out and started investigating and spending a lot of times and weeks investigating about Agent Orange on Guam. Rudy, could you pull up the picture, please? If it's okay? In twenty eighteen, myself, the late, I mean, the former Congresswoman, the Speaker Terahy, myself, and that's Congressman Tikano and his Chief of Staff. And so we were in his office lobbying for two things, Iwetak cleanup and Agent Orange Guam. And Congressman Tikano, at that time, was the Veterans Committee Chair. And so Congressman Tikano, through his committee, passed the PACT Act. And the PACT Act included burn pits, Iwetak cleanup, veterans, and Agent Orange. And so it has already been proven that Guam is exposed to Agent Orange. And by your resolution, Senator Luhan and the rest of the senators, is that it is very important, not only to listen to their testimonies, but many, many, many people who couldn't be here today that have passed away. And their families always wondered what happened to them. And so that's why the fight has to go on. And now that you've taken the helm, don't give up. Because many, many years, Speaker Terahy and I and so many other folks were denied. They said, there's no Agent Orange Guam, we never used Agent Orange in Guam. It was in the newspaper, everyone heard it. People were, were like mixed emotions. But then when they passed the PACT Act, like the attorney here said, that out of the blue it came out, it wasn't out of the blue. We were working on this for many, many, many years. And by the grace of God, and I want to thank the Speaker for having the intestinal fortitude to continue to fight this fight. And now, you know, they say, you know, just like Elijah and Elisha, now the mantle is given to you. So praise the Lord, and we're gonna support you. And I hope and pray that all these wonderful senators And I hope and pray that all these wonderful senators, every time I look at Senator Brown, you know, her brain is always working, you know, from my experience, so praise God, I really, I really like her. So that's my testimony, and if possible, you could get a bill out of the congressman, get a bill and pass it, and then hopefully we'll compensate the citizens of Guam, because, you know, it doesn't make any sense that the military will be compensated and not the citizens, you know, just like they testified about the shipyard, and just like they compensated the onsite participants for their exposure to radiation for the washdown, now they're going to compensate, hope, we pray that the House passes the bill to compensate the civilians here in Guam. So thank you very much, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr. Celestial. Dr. Akimono.
Thank you very much. If I could just clarify what Mr. Celestial said. It was by their testimony in Washington that it was admitted that when we were told on Guam that there was no Agent Orange, it was a lie.
Of course.
Thank you, Senator, for allowing me to affirm my support for this important legislative resolution. I'm a family physician here on Guam, working for the past 25 years. My grandmother is from Sumai, I grew up in Sanorita and in Peti. And as a little boy, I remember being very impressed with how neat and manicured was the grass that surrounded the perimeter of the military bases that take up a large portion of our island.
Dr. Akimono, can I just have you state your name for?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Vince Akimono. Thank you. From 1962 to 1971, the US military sprayed more than 10 million gallons of Agent Orange, mainly to defoliate Vietnamese jungles and farmland and destroy the enemy's food supply chain. Unfortunately, we are now reaffirming today that some of that Agent Orange was sprayed here on Guam. The non-military use of Agent Orange on Guam has more likely than not contributed to the development of certain cancers and presumptive conditions such as type 2 diabetes, ischemic heart disease, thyroid disease, and lung disease. In 1965, lab results found that the components of Agent Orange were toxic to human beings. And eventually, in 1970, the US military decided to stop using Agent Orange, but a couple of gung-ho brigades in Vietnam kept spraying it in violation of the suspension, and their commanders were disciplined and presumably lost their lunch money because they falsified reports to hide its use. In December of 2022, the US government announced that it will spend 29 million US tax dollars to clean up the soil and water around Bin Ho Air Force Base in southern Vietnam because the farmlands, the food, the water are now, are still toxic after this very long time. More than likely, it is more likely than not that some of the land and water on our island has been contaminated by the non-military use of toxins contained in the defoliants used on the military bases here on Guam. And many of my patients come to us in the clinic still now with diseases that are more likely than not caused by exposures either to themselves as young people or perhaps to their mothers while they were still in their mother's womb. In conclusion, I offer my medical testimony and support of this resolution to seek compensation for Guam survivors of Agent Orange exposure. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Akimono. Before I open up to the senators for questioning, can I have Attorney Berman join us? Yeah, the table here, and Mr. Titanos and Mr. Payne as well, so we can open the question up for the senators. There's a chair right there. Yeah, before I drafted this resolution, I want to say that I saw the ad that Attorney Berman had put out, and I called his office, spoke to him, and we met regarding that. And basically, with the PAC Act, where the civilian, or the military community was included in the compensation for Agent Orange being here in Guam, and we said, "Well, you know, we know of civilians as well." And so as a result of our meeting, we crafted, we came up with this, and he, I think, is, if I'm, I'll let him speak for himself, I'd be, I'd be a class attorney for, for representation for, as such. So, but I'll open up the panel, and Madam Speaker, let me start off.
Thank you very much to all of you who testified today. I bet some of you also testified in prior hearings that were held on Guam, because there have been many over the decades. In fact, that's one of the things that we tried to do was to compile all those testimonies in different occasions to present to the GAO, and they were here conducting their study so that hopefully they would incorporate all of that. And of course, when we send our resolutions to Congress every year, we also try to attach all that testimony so they would know that there were civilians on Guam testifying over and over as to their exposure, and very credible testimony. Eyewitnesses of many things, some of them had pictures, Mr. Titanos, Sismasi, for the photos that you're sharing with us. And so it's a long run, but I'm very glad we're here today. The resolutions that were supported by the legislature always include civilians. Congress didn't always include civilians, but the legislature, Guam Legislature, always tried to include civilians when we recognize and ask for presumptive coverage for the veterans who were on Guam. And we knew that that would help us with the civilian recognition as well, once they recognized the veterans. So it was really good that that act was passed last year, and of course, you all have seen the inconsistencies, how they had individual findings in the Veterans Affairs cases, individual finding, yes, yes, you were exposed to Agent Orange on Guam, but not consistently, and then not, not presumptively either. So we, there was also, I don't know if you remember this, that we had the testing, I think, one of you testified as to the testing. So we saw the soil being moved along the pipeline in the Tezen area, and I was wondering, wait a minute, they always say that's where the Agent Orange was sprayed, so where are they moving this soil to? And so then I started to follow up with the EPA, and that's, long story short, they got into a real investigation with the federal EPA support of places, very limited places, I have to say, but places in Anderson where the fuel tanks used to be stored, and they say where there was fuel or fuel tanks or fuel lines, that's where the proven places of the Agent Orange herbicide for sure, and they're trying to prove Agent Orange. So they brought on a team of EPA testers out here, I think at least twice, maybe three times, to test some of these areas, and they did find, like Lucy testified, absolute evidence of TCDD, other components. Of course, they won't make a conclusion, but they will definitely show that the components and the contaminants were, are present in Guam soils, up to now. So it's one of those things that lasts decades. I think Mr. Celestial is an expert on how long these things can last, because that's what he testified to Congress as well. And, and that's why we're concerned, because I, we, it's passed through DNA, it's passed through to offspring, and it's also passed through the soil and, and the environment. We became friends in this process with Brian Moyer, who also came to Guam. He's one of the veterans, but he's also a, he put together a group on Facebook called the Agent Orange Veterans of Guam, which was very helpful in connecting some of those Agent Orange veterans so that they could be unified in submitting their testimony along, along with Attorney Wells, John Wells, who, who led the advocacy work on Congress as well. And then the Yale Law School students came to Guam, some of them, one of them, or maybe two of them were Chamorro. So when they came to Guam, we were happy to give them everything we had, put them in contact with some of the people who had testified so they could personally get that evidence as well. And their research very much focused on the different cases that they were able to research across the nation of, where the VA granted benefits because of exposure to Agent Orange on Guam. And so for their conclusion, as stated in Senator Luhan's resolution, that the presumption should be extended to Guam. So again, I, I'm just so very grateful that you're all here with us today. Many are not, we know, perhaps because of this, and many have suffered because of this, and the illnesses that you've testified, that you've seen in your families, those are all listed as the illnesses that, that exposure to Agent Orange causes, not just for you, but for your, your offspring. So I had to learn a lot, but I'm very grateful that people I've met along the way, and for you here today, very, very grateful for you, Sismasi. Thank you for your testimony, and we're going to continue to push for this.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all for being here tonight and providing the testimony. And Dr. Akimono, I'm gonna, now gonna take you up on your offer, okay, for the, in as far as the medical testimony. Huh? Okay. You know, and this, this hearing is probably being watched by many individuals who would love to be even able to come, but not, that don't have the means to. Or were those individuals, we're just curious? Because I think almost every one of our families on this island have had to go through an encounter that, for a loved one or somebody who just, it, it didn't equate. So in your medical opinion and in your medical, in what you've observed, and, and I'm going to also lean on Mr. Celestial, who's an ex, who, you remember, Celestial, over the decades, you have become the prominent in as far as not just radiation, but Agent Orange's exposure, and I want to thank you for your continued insistence that this thing, again, that justice come. But for the edification of the panel here and for the people who are watching, what are some of the common type ailments?
You know, so one of the reasons I, I really wanted to make it tonight to come and speak is because I, I really owe it to a, a group of families who I've had the privilege to care for, for the past 25 years, and my intention was always to try to get some movement to make sense of why they, they're, they've suffered so much. And they've had diabetes, they've had heart disease, they've had blood cancers like leukemia and lymphoma, they've had thyroid trouble, they've had nerve damage, they've had different things. But for one particular group that I'm, I'm not sure if this is exactly why, why they've suffered, but along, I think it's Sergeant Roy T. Damian Street in Mong Mong Totomaiti, near the old power plant, across the street, there's just been so much cancer, and particularly cancer that grows in the throat, laryngeal cancer, things that on, on the whole, there's quite a bit of on Guam and in throughout Micronesia, it's uniquely prevalent, but particularly in that group. One family I know in particular, and I won't mention their name, but up and down that road, their, their land has been recognized as contaminated. In fact, I think the speaker is talking about cleanups where along the pipeline, they stripped the soil, they took bulldozers of land away, and then they brought new land, and they didn't tell the families what they found. They just said, "Don't worry about it." They being the federal government, because somebody paid for this. And honestly, I'm hoping that in the people's house tonight, we will resolve to find out what happened back then, meaning, you know, we're only talking about like 1972, 71, not that long ago. Why, why did the military not tell the people of Guam what was wrong with the land? And why are they willing to pay millions of dollars to clean it up now? And what are the children going to experience next? Because unfortunately, we're seeing kids have way too much cancer, particularly along that road. So we know of settlements on the military base near Naval Hospital where families have received tens of millions of dollars because their kid got leukemia, and the military admits that the playground was contaminated. So if that's precedent, then Mr. Berman, I'm sure, will be able to translate into that, into a settlement, because those were military kids, and those were military families who were treated differently than our families, particularly the families in Mong Mong Totomaiti. I'm pretty sure the mayor wouldn't mind me saying that he's the one that got me started on this, Mayor Rudy Paco, and he's one of the guys who had cancer. Too many of them along that road have had cancer. So if you're listening in Washington tonight, you got to tell us what's going on, because as their doctor, I don't know. And I'm, I'm working too hard to figure this out. I need, I need some information.
Thank you. Mrs. Celestial?
I totally agree with Dr. Akimono. It's already proven, all we need to do now is what the good senators doing and what you guys are doing, and hopefully we get a bill or they agree to compensate the citizens of Guam presumptively as the military. I truly believe that you guys are in the right road, and this, you guys have shed a lot of light, I'm really happy to see this. Our people out there that's watching, you know, they're, they're looking forward to this. A lot of people can't come down here and testify, and, and that's why we're here. And, and hopefully that Congress will adhere to our requests, just like the downwinders, they're, you know, they, to answer his question, Dr. Akimono's question, why didn't they tell us? They didn't even tell us anything back then, you know, it was, had to be declassified in 1994. And then now, through the grace of God, we're, it passed the Senate for the downwinders. So I believe that this is, this is going to pass. We just got to continue to pray and stick together, and, and hopefully for the people of Guam that this, this will benefit a lot of, a lot of people who's been suffering for many years, a lot of your families, my families, you know. Diabetes is prevalent here in Guam, cancer is prevalent, matter of fact, a lot of rare diseases here on Guam, and a lot of, I get emails from folks in the States from Guam, you know, "When are they going to get their check?" So that, it's hard, it's hard being on, on our side, especially Dr. Akimono's side. It's very difficult as a physician to, to not have the answers for these families. But we have the answer. It's Agent Orange, it's ionizing radiation. We have been clearly contaminated here in our island, and we've proven it. The National Academies of Science have proven it for Guam. And now with the PAC Act, it's only, it's only common sense that they compensate the people of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Uncle Bill, I'm going to put you on the spot here. I've known you for so many years. And you know, Uncle Bill, Mr. Payne, you wouldn't normally be sitting here unless it's something's really bothering you.
What bothers me was, I'll be honest with you, senators, when I first met- When I first met Bob, was a meeting in Agony Heights, Tutu and Hut there on the hill with Mayor McDonald. He brought, I mean, Senator Frank Augun, the defunct senator now, brought Bob to talk to us, workers from SRF, about the contamination of Agent Orange and the radiation. And then Senator Augun promised that, oh, he's going to push all of this forward, all of this forward. The only person that pushed anything forward was Bob. And I hold the ex facto, Senator, bad promises. So I've always picked a bone with Frank Augun whenever he runs this to me, and I just say, Frank, you turn me off, man. You don't live up to your word. We're talking about civilian people that are not covered by Uncle Sam or the Veterans' preference or what. And their families, they exhume their bodies, they'll find asbestos in their lungs, they'll find radiation, contamination. I authorized three or four trips of 35 people to Enewitak, where he was, to prepare those service craft to be transported to Guam for target hole practices by our US-7 fleet ship up at Faro de Valleón. When those service craft arrive at the reserve craft beach, and they put them up on stilts, I call the radiac technician, Mr., his name is Tony, said, bring the Geiger counter, I want to go down and really see whether these vessels were clear of radiation. Fifty feet away, we turned on the Geiger counter. So we went back and asked Comnavmar, hey, can you please verify whether these service craft vessels were cleared totally with radiation? Because Enewitak was the testing grounds. Oh, don't worry, it's negligible. It's negligible. But I am telling you, various people from different traits within the command, we send down as a tiger team to prepare those vessels. Four trips of over 35 people, and I know some of them are still alive. One of them is a welder named Jesse Santos, a welder, Maka. And I see him up at the golf course, he's a maintenance worker now for Leo Palace. And I always make it a point to check on him whether he's okay. And he said, he's struggling. So what about the other people? What about, most of them have passed on, and he's still managing his health issues. But this is why I am here, because of my brothers. My two other brothers went to the same apprenticeship program as I did, were all blue collar workers. My two oldest sons were blue collar workers. They're in the States working. When it came to downsizing, they downsized SRF and they sent about 200, 300 of our prime workers to the other shipyards in the States, which that's the only job that they had. And I know those guys are suffering too. So I hope, in all honesty, that something good can come out of this, okay? It's for our good people. We have no interest in business, politics, or whatever government issues there are. We are honest, working people. And that's what we ask. Fair treatment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Mr. Carter, I'm sorry, but I'd like for you to come, I was going to reference something that you and I, you know, and first, I thank you for the fortitude and for being able to be here to testify. But, Ms. Carter, I needed to share, and you can relate with me on this, at a time when we served on the Make-A-Wish board. Do you recall the time that, I think you can, you know what I'm referring to, when one of our members?
Yes, we had a child who was a Make-A-Wish recipient and had, was diagnosed with the same type of cancer that my son had. So I brought my son to that wish granting event because I wanted him to see how fortunate he is to have survived the cancer. So yes, I recall that same situation, so thank you.
You're very welcome. And I wanted to bring this because Dr. Akamoto goes to what you were saying. There was an eight-page expose printed in the Pacific Daily News. I want to say sometime around 2003, 2004, that correlated the number of wish children or the residences where wish children resided with cancers and where they lived on Guam, and the amazing number of children that lived in Mong Mong Totomaiti, Aget, and Dedidu. And you put an overlay over a map.
Yeah.
And you can see it.
You know, the thing is that Agent Orange is just one of several names given to cocktails of pesticides. So we're really not worried about Agent Orange, we're worried about poison. Whatever the poison was that was being used by the military to do whatever they thought was necessary, we need to know what they were, because then we can determine, you know, what to do with the consequences. Right now, we're not being told anything, and it's not for our own good. So the resolution is a demand for compensation, and part of that compensation is information. We can take care of ourselves. Apparently, that's what we're being told to do. You know, for them, for Mr. Payne to be told, don't worry about it, it's negligible. Well, it's negligible for them, because they're sitting up there at Comnavmar, but down in the village, near the pipelines, along Roy T. Damian Street, little kids are playing in the water that's leaking out of the power plant, or they're going down into the Agony Swamp, you know, to go fishing for prawns that are eating dioxin. You know, it's not hard. We just need to be told what we're up against so we can take care of our own people. So the compensation is information.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much again for your testimony. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Tadaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening to everyone that's here. Thank you so much for coming out and speaking up against this. Not speaking, when I say speaking up against it, it's just, I mean, just the atrocities of what all this has caused, cancer and the deaths of some of our families and friends who've passed away because of this, and those who are still living with the issues. You know, Monica, when you were, you brought up earlier, or Ms. Carter, when you brought up earlier about, on Anderson, that you were there on Anderson, what year was that, the year that you worked there?
1973 to 1979.
I lived on Anderson Air Force Base in 1960, all the way to 1964, on Anderson Air Force Base with my father. And it worries me, you know, I'm a cancer survivor, and I always wonder, you know, with all the, going to all the meetings regarding Downwinders as well as, you know, Agent Orange and everything, it always makes me wonder, you know, maybe I was exposed to that and I had a sister who passed away in 2019 of cancer as well. And I really appreciate everyone continuing, especially you're here late at night and taking the time out to speak up about this, to bring awareness, and hopefully that the next generation or those family members who can continue after you to keep pushing on this, because for years, we've been doing this. And, you know, Robert, I don't know, I hope you live forever to continue to be our advocate for this and not, because I know you won't give up, you know, and I just hope that the next generation understands the importance of being recognized or bringing justice to what happened to those people on Guam. They're doing it for other places in the States, but we seem to be left out. We seem to be forgotten. And if you look at everybody on this table, as well as out there, as all been in the military, we served the United States, you know, to protect and serve, and many of our families and individuals have done that so that they, but yet, when it comes to Guam and being recognized, we are third-class citizens. So I greatly appreciate and please encourage you to continue to advocate, to be at the meetings that Robert has, to continue to bring more people into the fold to recognize the concerns. And every time people ask you, why is there so much cancer on this island? Invite them to one of Robert's meetings and have their questions answered there. But again, I appreciate, and Joe Sinagustin, thank you so much for being here tonight, representing the veterans on their behalf as well. And Mr. Titanoe, where are you? Thank you so much for being here tonight and providing those pictures and stuff. I really appreciate it. I heard your stories and, you know, you really touched me, your story in particular. So thank you again. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Senator Tadaway. Senator Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, first time I ever heard about Agent Orange, I was about 12 years old. I went to go visit my, you know, hang out with my friend at his house, and he opened the door and I looked at his dad. And, you know, the effects were so pronounced that it's unmistakable, I'm not a doctor, but I asked my friend, I said, what's wrong with your dad? And he says, Agent Orange. And I was about 12 years old when I heard that, those words for the first time. And it was, you know, I, it was very interesting, to say the least, but both his sons, I don't think they reached the age of 30. And it was a tragedy. It's, and then I see, you know, and I hear, I'm just learning about this, and, you know, I'm very new and exposed to these kinds of information. I've, my first time doing this. And Mr. Celestial and everybody who's advocate for our people out there, I really, really commend you. I had no idea you had such a huge movement going, trying to help our people. For that's where I commend you. Same with you, Doc, and Mr. Titanoe back there, and everybody, I really appreciate what you do. And I'm very thankful for the author for bringing this and proffering this, and we, I, you have my support. You know, I've been in the military, just like you and you, and I love my country. And just once, don't you feel like you want them to love you back just the same? And so I'm going to be here, I'm going to advocate for you and along with our good senators, and let's, and work with our congressman as well to try to get this settled once and for all. Thank you for all the work you've done. I have nothing further, sir.
Thank you, Senator Nicholas. Senator Perez.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair. I want to thank everyone who has come here tonight. Your testimony is so important for our community to hear. It's these stories that need to be told. And I know with Robert Celestial, you know, it really gives testament that these stories hold weight, and especially when we have, you know, confirmation from these institutions such as the National Academy of Sciences. I think any of these stories, we need to keep telling these stories so that we can get compensation for these exposures. And, you know, what we see in our history is that many times, you know, the story is told, but it often gets ignored, right, at first? It gets ignored. And then more, as more stories are told, then it gains traction, and pretty soon you have this movement, right? And I'm really thankful that the PACT Act was passed. That really opened the door for a lot of veterans to not have to fight for health coverage, you know, to be acknowledged that just by serving in a jurisdiction or community, that they have the doorways to health coverage or health, healthcare, access to healthcare. And so many of you have testified that, you know, you didn't serve in the military, but you were in situations that supported the military's efforts and thus had exposure to many of these chemicals. And I think what's often ignored is the magnitude. So I know, Mr. Titanoe, you mentioned that, you know, the documents, you know, basically need to catch up with the testimonies that you're providing today. So the 55-gallon drums, I mean, I, I mean, maybe you can speak to this, Mr. Payne, to, in your estimate, how many drums of these were brought into Guam?
Whenever the AFS auxiliary fleet support logistic ships come in and load, we at SRF basically don't see the true picture, the cargo that they carry out, because like I said, they have a warehouse across one of the piers where they store all their equipment from forklift to unrep equipment, the rigging gear, everything. When they come in, they switch after the overhaul, they switch out the equipment, take the ones that were on the ship in, and then they tranship it to the States for refurbishment at Port Honemi. Whatever that were authorized to rebuild and restore, they take it across and we work on it. But the true picture of the cargo is when they're out at sea, the helicopters come in from Vietnam, from Da Nang, right on top of the deck, then they start moving all the, they put them in big, big, big nets, and then the helicopter just hoist them up, they came straight into the army base or the navy base where they unload, and the pallets are secured so good, and the, I mean, the drums are secured on the pallets so good, that even if the helicopter wobbles, the drums are still there. But were there any open drums that fell during voyage or transportation? We don't know that. Because the next port of entry that they, that they go to is either Singapore or Subic to have their helicopter pad cleaned out and come into Guam or go to Subic, and then our engineering and planning people will meet them, almost 30 or 40 people, to assess the condition of the ship before we start negotiating the work to do. And it is a cycle that has gone on and on and on. This went on to the time that those auxiliary ships were turned over to MSC permanently. But don't forget, at that time, we were working for SIMPAK fleet. It is no longer SIMPAK fleet, it's PAC fleet now. They've practically cut the military organization in half. That's why they cannot support that three, that one ship to shoot the rock, the, you know, the missiles out of Guam, they can't support that. It has to be three ships, they have to rotate every three months. You can't keep a ship- You can't keep a ship out more than six months at sea. It's the rule. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. So, yeah, I think some of the themes that we hear is that the exposure happens and then we know decades later, right? We know decades later what we were exposed to, and now, you know, we're suffering from these illnesses. And that's one of the problems, right? When we're in close proximity as fence line communities to military, military, military projects, functions, activities. And, you know, I'm in full support of this resolution because I think, you know, contamination doesn't know boundaries, right? It doesn't, it doesn't stop at a fence line. In fact, some of these were sprayed outside the fence line. And with that, our health is impacted. I think it's really critical that, you know, our people are compensated, but I think also moving forward too, it's important that we demand transparency about what's coming into our communities. You know, we're seeing more influx, you know, increased buildup, you know, what are the chemicals that are coming in and how can we protect ourselves as a community? And so I appreciate everyone's presence here today. I know it took a lot to come out tonight, you know, the last place you want to be is the Guam Legislature, right? So you could do much more, you could be in the comfort of your home, own home, is what I'm trying to say. But I know it took a lot of sacrifice to come out here tonight, so thank you so much and look forward to, you know, advocating for compensation. Sajdus Masih, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Senator Luhann, and also your efforts and your initiative to pursue this issue and also not just sponsor this resolution but hold this hearing. I think this is one of the first hearings that have been held this term by a member of the Republican side of the aisle, so certainly appreciate your efforts to do this. I thank everyone for testifying. I mean, some of the testimony today really hits home, as some of you have worked with my late father, who was also in the Navy, who served in Vietnam in combat, and served in the rubber reinforced, and came back to Guam, and his last duty station in the Navy was here on Guam at SRF, and then retired and worked at NSD, and then came back for twenty years working at SRF with Bill Payne and many others of you that worked at SRF. He was retired as a foreman at Shop Seventy-two, I always remember Shop Seventy-two. I spent a lot of my growing up years on the wharf down there at SRF because of my dad's combined time there. And I certainly understand, having been a family member of someone who's had to go through service-related disabilities, my father was a hundred percent disabled through his military service, and his ultimate illness and passing was related to that. So I certainly not just sympathize, but to have to experience it myself and see the suffering. I know the desire is the compensation, and because it's one of the few ways in our society after these type of harms have happened, you know, to have a form of acknowledgement of what our people have suffered. And, you know, on a sunny, beautiful day on Guam, as beautiful as our island is, it's hard to sometimes absorb the amount of contamination that has happened here. And, you know, Mr. Celestial, your initiatives with the Downwinders issue all these years, and you've been advocating since my last life in the legislature, and now it's finally getting some traction. You know, when we see that, not that these are illnesses that people don't have in other jurisdictions, but the amount of illness that we have in such a small population, who doesn't, within a proximity of yourself, has not suffered from cancer and some of these other illnesses, and the children that you're talking about, the younger generation, for us, some of us are just waiting, is it going to be our, is it going to be our turn? But I think that advocacy and awareness has to be, and has always been Guam, and we've had to be the one to go knocking on the door to ensure that our people are recognized for what they've gone through, and it's really unfortunate. I sat for fourteen years as a board member, member of the Anderson Air Force Base Restoration Advisory Board, and for a number of years served as the vice chair. When you see the amount of areas on Guam, and also because of our partnership with the Navy, when you see the amount of areas on Guam of contaminants as a result of the military presence, it's significant. If you were to put a little pin on every part of the island that's been affected, I've seen cleanup sites up at Anderson and off-base in Marbo where they have had to address, that was part of our job, was to direct the and prioritize the cleanup of Anderson, where you see rows of where they simply excavated in the ground and the limestone, the limestone that is there, you know, our sponge for our drinking water, and all the chemicals, the rusted barrels, the debris, munitions even, that were thrown into the ground or on the clifflines up there. You know, the issues we still have at Naval Station, I mean, they closed the landfill there, and, you know, still to this day, they've spent millions of dollars to try to cap the PCBs that are coming out of Erody, and it's still coming out of Erody. So it's really sad, the reality of our history, I mean, we love America, but there's a part of us that doesn't love America so much for the challenges and suffering that our people have had to deal with. So I don't have much more to add. I think all of you and coming forth and providing your testimony and your experience is appreciated. I know this is not something many of you may do all the time, but hearing your voices really will help support this initiative that Senator Luhann is leading here in the legislature, to recognize our people, because this is just, you know, you would trade money to get health back. You would trade money to get your loved ones back, to have quality of life, because once it's gone, you just, you can never get it back in this lifetime, in this physical body that we have. So I don't have much more to add, I appreciate you. I mean, you're all, you're all warriors in helping bring this issue to light, because we have to. If we don't, you know, then those of us and our people that have suffered, their voices go unheard, and that should never be the case. So thank you so much for your time, your efforts, and your testimony on bringing your very personal stories to light to us this evening. With that, Senator Luhann, thank you also for chairing this hearing tonight.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Attorney Berman, a question here. I know we're asking the federal government for compensation, but as an attorney, could the companies that develop these chemicals as well that they use, are they, will they be able to be, will have some responsibility for...
The answer to that question is, that issue was litigated in the early eighties, eighty-three, eighty-four, and the largest class action settlement in the history of the United States took place in eighty-three, eighty-four, it's like two-hundred-seventy-five million. It was veterans suing Monsanto and the other manufacturers, and there's releases, and it's basically a closed door. It's a fair question, but legally, there's nothing to pursue there.
Nothing to pursue.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there isn't. Also, the people in Vietnam brought major cases, also went to the Second Circuit Court of Appeals, which is just below the Supreme Court, and they hit the same wall, they weren't able to sue the manufacturers. So I think it's, it's not, it's pointless at this point.
Okay.
Sorry.
In pursuit of this, and again, we've had lengthy discussions, so just want to get our discussions out in public, in the sense that because of that, that, again, the recognition and the compensation from the federal government, that we're going to pursue that line as well. And I know I also had spoken to the congressman about this earlier on, that we were going to introduce this, and so we will present this to his office as well, but because this is a substantive resolution, and that's why we're having a public hearing, we would have to put the committee report together and present it to the body for a vote. And we're looking, we won't be able to do that in the August session because all of August is reserved for budget, so we're looking at, we should be able to get the committee report out in time for the September, September session. So I'm...
Senator Haland, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just speaking on a purely technical legal level, some of the people here have commented on the issue of presumption. The best thing that can happen for all the civilians who would like to pursue claims, if they could receive the same presumption of coverage that the military are receiving. Understand now, under the new PACT Act, if they meet three criteria, if they're on Guam, they have one of the diseases, and they're in the military, they're presumed to be disabled, and the government has to disprove it, the burden shifts. So the most important thing that can happen to amend the new PACT Act is to create that same presumption for civilians. If they have the disease, they were located in Anderson or near these areas, they should have the same presumption of coverage and let the government rebut it.
Rebut it.
That will be the next mini legal step, I think, that would help civilians.
Okay. And I would ask as well, because I will have a conversation, of course, with our congressman, and if need be, if we need to go to Washington and lobby, would you be able to join me in that effort? Thank you, thank you very much. Any other, any other questions? That being said, Sajdus Masih, thank you very much, senators and panel, thank you very much to all my colleagues, and if there are no further questions, comments, if there are no additional individuals to present testimony, this concludes our discussion on Resolution 2937COR, this public hearing, of this public hearing. My office will be accepting testimony, written testimony, for ten days. It can be emailed to my office at senatorsluhan@guamlegislature.org, or mailed to my office or hand-delivered to my office, and my office is located at 259 Martyr Street, Suite 101A, the Calvo Areola Building, Hagatnya, Guam, 96910. A record of this hearing, a verbatim transcript will be provided, as well as findings by the committee, and all of that will be posted on the legislative website as well. That being said, this public hearing is adjourned, it is now 8:28 PM on the 31st of July 2023. Thank you very much, Sajdus Masih.